Okay, so now being 5:45, I'll call the December 20th meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order, pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. This meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to access this meeting may join the Zoom meeting via your computer or audio or both. And the link information has been provided on our agenda. You can also, if you dial in, the phone number was provided there with the passcode information. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we aren't able to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the Town's website, town.plynton.us, an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can also be found on the Town of Plington website. So first item on the agenda is 5:45. We are meeting with the Board of Assessors for a tax classification hearing. So this hearing was posted in the townhouse. It was also advertised in the Plington Reporter on Friday, December 17. Wendy or Ethan, do you want me to read the notice that was printed in the paper?
I think we could waive the reading of the notice.
Okay, perfect. Oh, you can waive, we can waive the reading of the notice?
Yes, as long as people know what we're talking about, which we'll go into, I think that should be fine.
Okay, perfect. Okay, all right. So it's been duly posted and I will open the hearing now for the tax classification. So do you want me to turn things over to you, Ethan?
Yes, that'll be fine. All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Ethan Stiles and I am the chairperson of the Plinton Board of Assessors. And today we're here before the selectmen for the annual property tax classification hearing. And the purpose of the classification hearing is is that Massachusetts general law requires all municipalities provide a classification hearing with an option to classify all real properties in the four categories: residential, open space, commercial, and industrial. The Board of Selectmen will vote on a minimum residential factor for determining a tax shift or a single tax rate. We've already gone over the hearing requirements, so we can go to the exemption. Now, there are a couple of exemption options. There's the open space discount, but we don't have that class in Plinton and most municipalities don't. There's the residential exemption, but that's for non-owner occupied properties and Plinton has very few of those. We have the small commercial exemption, and that is essentially for businesses having ten or fewer employees and a value of about $1 million or less of their real property, but that has not been applied either in Plinton and very little would satisfy that anyway. So our recommendation is that we, as the Board of Assessors, recommend not splitting the tax rate or not adopting residential and small business exemptions. So in other words, what we're asking is that the is that the selectmen adopt a factor of one, which adopts a single tax rate for all the four classes of properties in town for fiscal year 2022. And you can see here, and this is without adoption, this is without any kind of adjustment. The allocation can change slightly from year to year depending on which properties have increased or decreased in value, which classes of property. You can see here on the table, the change percentage. The greatest was just under 3% for residential, a positive change. And personal property, like, you know, a 2.58% negative change. So now we have four motions that the select board must decide upon at this hearing. And it's indicated there. And that's pretty, and there's a few documents assigned. That's pretty much it unless there's any discussion to be had on any of the subject matter for the classification hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ethan, I had myself muted. Did the Board of Assessors call their meeting to order?
I'm not sure if we have officially called in this context. Wendy, did we, we posted a joint meeting notice, didn't we?
We did, yeah, we did, yep.
Okay, you may want to call your meeting to order and we should probably run around and say who's all here just for the record. So I can start. Christine Joy, Board of Selectmen.
John Traynor, Board of Selectmen.
Mark Russo, Board of Selectmen.
Ethan Stiles, Board of Assessors.
Josh Van Anderson, Board of Assessors.
All right, and as chairperson of the Board of Assessors, I call our assessors portion of the meeting to order and reiterate what I previously said to the selectmen.
Wendy Jones, Assistant Assessor.
Liz Dennehy, Town Administrator.
Do we have anybody else with us? I thought I saw Tricia.
Bree.
Okay, Bree. All right.
I don't think we need to recognize anyone else because no one else is essential to the purpose of this meeting.
Well, not necessarily. This is a public hearing and if there's anybody here from the public that would like to weigh in on this, we need to give them that opportunity. So that's why we're running around the horn here. So I see Christine Kelly's here as well. I see we've got Nate on now. And then there's a phone number ending in 0433. Is that you, Bree?
Kathy Canizo.
I'm sorry, who, can you identify yourself?
It's Kathy Canizo.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Okay, so it looks like that's everyone. All right, so the Board of Assessors has presented the evidentiary part of the hearing. Do any members of the selectmen have a question for the Board of Assessors?
I was, John Traynor, I was just a little interested in why the personal valuation dropped.
The personal property, a lot of the personal property dropped because some of it is Cisco, but the personal property depreciates pretty rapidly.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for the Board of Assessors? All right, is there anyone here that would like to speak either in favor or against what we're looking to do, the motions that are ahead of us? Anyone like to speak? All right, seeing no hands, hearing no voices. Are we ready to make a motion here and then we can close out the hearing? John and Mark, are you ready to move forward?
I'm ready.
Okay, all right, perfect. All right, so I'll move that we approve the residential factor of one. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Traynor?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, all right. The second motion is regarding the residential exemption, which we discussed. It really does not apply to our situation. So I'll make a motion that we do not grant a residential exemption.
Second.
Okay, second, roll call vote. Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Traynor?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. All right, the next item is the open space discount. And as discussed, it was not recommended that we entertain this at this time. So I'll make a motion to not grant an open space discount.
Second.
Okay, second, roll call vote. Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Traynor?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, and finally, the small commercial exemption. Same reasons we discussed earlier, just really not in the town's best interest at this time. So I'll make a motion to not grant a small commercial exemption.
Second.
Sorry, second, Mr. Russo, so roll call vote. Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Traynor?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, all right, so we've made the motions. Just as a point of order, the proper certifications were all in place for us to address this at the meeting, so we are good to go. So at this point, I'll make a motion that we close the tax classification hearing. Do we have a second? All right, roll call vote. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Traynor?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Do the assessors want to close the hearing as well?
Yes, I think, oh, I'm the chairperson, so. I didn't quite hear that.
This is Josh Van, motion to close the meeting.
A second. All there? Yes?
Yep.
Okay. All right, I think our meetings are closed.
All right, very good, folks. So thank you very much to the Board of Assessors for meeting with us and thank you for that, having the presentation. It really made it easy to go through that information. So thank you, Wendy, for putting that together for us.
Yeah, that was good.
Thank you very much. Okay, all right, good night, folks.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
All right, so the next item is vote of adoption. This is OBRa, the Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act. Wendy, did you want to speak to this?
This is Christine Kelly.
Oh, I'm sorry, Christine. Sorry, my bad.
So I am looking to ask the Board to vote to adopt the OBRa plan to replace Social Security being taken from some of the part-time, temporary, and on-call employees. A majority, if not really all of Massachusetts municipalities, don't pay into Social Security because we have our own Plymouth County or whatever county you belong to and mass teachers retirement. So this would be a cost savings to the town. Just fiscal '20, I think it was '20 or '21, I'm sorry, '20. We have had over $40,000 that we had to match for Social Security. So that could be an annual savings to the town if we adopt this. And basically, it's just instead of this 6.2% of Social Security being taken from the employee's paycheck, 7.5% would then be going into a savings account for the employee so that if they decide to move on to another position, another town, they can either take that money with them and roll it over, or they can cash it out. So it's just in replace of Social Security, which we shouldn't be paying into to begin with.
The 7.5% is contributed by the employee?
Mm-hmm. And right now, they're paying 6.20. And what's happening is a lot of the employees that we have having Social Security being taken out, they're not reaping the benefit of the Social Security because they're either on-call special police that are already contributing to a retirement plan with another municipality. So Social Security does not benefit them. It also, we have a lot of senior or retired employees, say, with election workers. They're already collecting maybe Social Security. They can't add this to that account. So the money is literally being taken out of their paychecks and they're not seeing, you know, a return on it. With OBRa, the money then is there in a savings plan for them to either roll over if they leave us to go to another municipality or another job because they can probably roll it over to a 401K or 457. And, you know, for those who decide not to roll it over, they can then take the money with them, with Social Security they can.
Do we have any idea how many people we're talking?
Yes, actually, we mailed out, we had 26 to begin with and then I found a few more employees. So we actually already sent out 36 packets. However, that 36, it's going to fluctuate because we may have somebody on the payroll once, you know, and they may not come back. But for, I think, a good chunk, it's probably between 20 and 25 employees on a regular basis that this is going to affect. And they've already been notified, packages have been sent out. We have not heard back from anybody with any questions. We tried to be as simple as possible with the packages that we sent out to the employees. You know, so like I said, when I spoke to my payroll company, he goes, "Oh, he goes, "All right, you're my last municipality jumping on board with this." So this is pretty widespread with the Commonwealth and we're kind of, we're way in the back of the pack right now.
So this sounds like a no-brainer. Is there any downside at all?
Not necessarily, no. You know, yes, there's a slight increase, obviously, of what's coming out. However, that money is sitting in account for that employee. I would rather see that small percentage being taken and put aside than a little lower rate and have them not be able to recoup that money, you know, once they leave the town.
Sure.
It seems to make sense and as long as it's been well communicated to the employees that are affected, I think we should go forward with it.
Liz or Nate, do you have anything you want to add? Any questions or concerns?
No, I've gone all through this with Christine and I feel confident that this is the direction to go forward.
Okay. All right, Nate, anything from FinCom on this?
Uh, no, no, I'm fine with it, thank you.
Okay, all right. So all you need from us, Christine, is for us to vote to adopt OBRa? Effective immediately? Do you need?
Well, I do, I have everything set up to come off of the town's January 6th payroll and that works well because it's a new calendar year and it'll work well with taxes for the employee.
Okay, all right. So I'll make a motion that the town vote to adopt OBRa, the Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act, which will take effect January 6, 2022. Does that sound good?
Yes.
Okay, all right. We've got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Russo?
Yeah.
Mr. Traynor?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, very good. All right, well, thank you, Christine, very good.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah, thank you for finding us some savings. That's always a good idea.
My job.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, we have got Nate here on behalf of the Cultural Council to talk about the design contest idea for the town seal. So Nate, can I turn it over to you?
Sure, thank you. Thanks to the board members for giving me a few minutes to speak this evening. I approached you a couple of weeks ago, sort of off the cuff with the last-minute comment on something that the Cultural Council was considering for this year. As you are probably aware, Cultural Council has funds that are available to us to use for a community initiative for promotion of arts and culture in the town. And one of the ideas that we had bounced around as a council this year was the possibility of sponsoring a contest for the purpose of coming up with some suggestions for a town seal. Some folks in town have commented that they are disappointed in the fact that the town does not have an official town seal. As you're all aware, we have sort of a generic circle with the word "seal" on it that we use on our official postings in the newspaper and such. And honestly, having been a resident now for about 15 years, I remember the first time I saw that in the newspaper. I thought it was some sort of a misprint or some sort of a, maybe the newspaper didn't have, you know, a stock photo of the seal or something like that. It never occurred to me that we never really had a seal until I started looking into it and having some discussions with some other folks. So anyway, the idea behind it, that the council would use some of the state funds so it wouldn't be any expense at all to the town, no added expense to the town. And we thought it would be kind of a fun thing to do. You know, during COVID, there's been a renewed interest in history in the town. You know, thanks to our friends, you know, Mike and Jen with their HGTV show. I think a lot of folks, certainly all the folks on this call, have a sense of pride and a sense of history with the town. And we would like to perhaps convert that into some ideas, you know, for suggestions, possibilities for a town seal. It would be non-binding. Our thought would be we would sponsor the contest. We would use some of the funds available to it to create some prizes, a prize structure for the purpose of, you know, hopefully generating some more submissions on the part of, whether it be townspeople or even folks outside the town. We would open it up to professionals and amateurs alike. We would obviously publicize it. And we thought we would give like a 90-day timeframe for folks to submit their proposals. And then we could either vote, you know, have, what we had one thought of perhaps having them, you know, professionally generated and then on display at, say, a town meeting for the townspeople to take a look at and maybe vote there with, you know, some sort of a secret ballot. Or we could obviously do it, you know, in some sort of online fashion, either through the Facebook group that we have or maybe through the town's website. So as you can tell, it's kind of an idea that's still being fleshed out, but we wanted to come before the Board to get your blessing and your, hopefully, your approval and agreement on sponsoring such a contest.
Barker, John, anything for Nate?
Yeah, so I love the idea, Nate, thank you very much. It seems like a great way to create some esprit de corps and involvement in the town. I suppose my only concern is who or what is the ultimate deciding authority? And I, in these kind of challenging, sensitive times, you know, I think we'd probably have to take a fairly critical look that we end up not stepping on anyone's toes.
Sure, I think, you know, in our discussions that we've had as members of council, our thought was obviously we would defer to the selectmen. I think ultimately, you know, the authority on whether to approve or not the use of a winning design would fall to the selectmen. We would certainly look at it as our purpose as Cultural Council is strictly to kind of generate some buzz, some positive feelings towards the town. Maybe, you know, have some folks do some research into the history of the town in their ideas and submissions for the seal. And again, we would put it up for a non-binding vote so that, I think, and we would communicate that upfront so that folks would know that if they're voting for a particular design or if they have a friend or a relative that maybe has submitted a particular design, that the use of that design would be strictly up to, you know, the governing body, in this case, the selectmen. And I know Liz has had some preliminary discussions with town council about coming up with some sort of a waiver that we would have folks agree to and sign as they submitted a design with the understanding that, and Liz helped me out here, but I think, you know, the idea would be that, you know, they would not be able to capitalize monetarily and they would not be compensated other than perhaps winning the contest in exchange for their design submission. And they understand that if the town were to move forward and adopt one of these designs, that they would not be, they would not have any sort of claim to monetarily to that design.
Right. Council did offer to draft up almost like an application form that you could have people fill out and submit with their design. So if you're interested in that, Nate, I can have him get started on that.
Okay, well, I think depending on how the next five minutes goes, we'll see how that goes.
So I'm excited about this project. My only two suggestions, I guess, is just the languaging might be important. And I think if we get to the point of a non-binding vote, I'd even call it a non-binding preference. So it didn't have that sense of, that's our decision. And then the other possibility is rather than presenting one, maybe presenting two or three of the finalists that got presented to the Board of Selectmen to make the decision on.
Well, I mean, I could see it going two different ways. You know, we could have a contest and maybe there could be a winning design of the contest, but that wouldn't necessarily be the one that the Board would, I mean, the Board could choose to adopt any or all of them or none of them, you know, as the, if we do decide to move forward. Because obviously, there's a cost involved with moving forward with, you know, changing stationery and whatever, you know, websites and patches and, you know, all that stuff.
You're not going to get us in trouble.
I still have a fondness for the.
Yeah, yeah. And here comes the, "It ain't broke, but not, why fix it?"
Right.
Which I understand. I, you know, I'm a traditionalist at heart. I completely understand. The seal as it is has served us well for however many years.
I guess that's part of it is that it's been around for over 200 years and it's kind of, you know. I would say though, I would like to see some sort of, if we, I'm not against going forward, but I would want to know that there was at least a minimum of so many people voting, et cetera, and so many designs, so that when it's done, we can say the town voted it, not some small subsection.
Yeah, sure, absolutely, absolutely. Well, that's, again, that was kind of why I thought perhaps if we brought it forth at town meeting, maybe we would get at least that percentage of people representing the full town.
Yeah, we might even get more people at town meeting.
There we go.
Always a scary thought, but that'd be nice.
Win-win.
Yeah. Now, if we could couple it with a PAC.
Good point. Yeah, Nate, I like it too. My only request would be that when we get the finalists, that we include the original, just in case there are people that prefer the original over all of the new submissions. Just kind of toss that in at the end.
Yep, no, great point, excellent, thank you, thank you. Okay, so I guess I have, I'm guessing I have the blessing of the Board to proceed.
All right, so what do you need from us to proceed?
I think just a thumbs up, which is, it sounds like you're giving us. So we'll proceed and we'll certainly keep you posted. And Liz, I guess if you could have council, you know, draft up some sort of an application or whatever he thinks we might need. I'll bring it to the Cultural Council. We have another meeting scheduled, I believe, week and a half or so. And we'll discuss it there and we'll report back to the Board.
Okay, I'll send it to him and I'll include you on it so that just helps with communication.
Sure, great, okay, thanks very much.
Thank you, Nate.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Good night.
One more thing, Liz, might we gently mention to town council that to the degree possible, we can keep this, whatever he wants to put in there in human being language rather than particularly formal legal language? formal legal language, just for.
Yes, I can pass that along.
And blame me on that. Thank you.
Good suggestion. All right. Thank you, Nate, very much. Great idea. This will, this will be fun.
I hope so. I hope so. Thanks.
Good night.
Good night.
All right. So next item is Area 58 Operational Discussion. So John, did you ask for this?
I did. I wanted to, in a sense, it's maybe a part of a bigger strategy around the whole technology and communications. The fact that we don't have strong expertise within the town, at least available to us. But over the, you know, I've been critical of the operation of Area 58 in the sense of, it seems that things that we have wanted to take forward haven't happened. And lately, for the last couple of months, up until recently, things like the TV channel being broadcast on Channel 15 with sound, but no picture, that went on for a while. The meetings not being posted in time, so that at one point we had two or three meetings that were not up on the, on the Area 58. Now, and I think one of the things that happens is the way these meetings get posted is they go to Area 58, but Area 58 then puts them up on YouTube. They then take, once it's up on YouTube, they then take the embedded code and put it back on Area 58. So if you go to Area 58 and call up a selectmen's meeting, for instance, you'll see it says that you're going to be watching this on YouTube. They don't, you know, they don't change it. And by law, I don't think they can go into the meeting and adjust it because it is, even though it's an unofficial record, can't be tampered with. So the question is, it's not so much that we get a benchmark that says we're going to get this better. But in our discussions, I believe we move towards what we'd like to see down the road is meetings, you know, in public, that are broadcast live with Zoom or some video conferencing ability for people to come into the meeting. And we're not, I feel uncomfortable that we're not moving forward because we're not doing what we have just with the Zoom meetings we have today. I looked at other towns, PACT TV, which is the Plymouth area community TV. They do Pembroke, Kingston, Duxbury and Plymouth. And each one has a little different setup. Plymouth is moving towards doing exactly what we've talked about. And I believe, I called the lady there, I didn't say I was a selectman or anything, I didn't even give her my name, but I just said, help me understand what the four towns do. And Duxbury, as I understand it currently does all three. They broadcast it on a channel live. They have Zoom conferencing ability. And they have the public available to come to the meeting. So I want to initiate a discussion that says, where are we going and what do we think about? I believe there's a contract coming up, Mark, maybe you can correct me, this June, and what exactly that would entail and what that means. And just see if we can get some sort of agreement among the three or four of us that this is where we want to go over time and what kind of time that takes.
So I, I'm glad to comment in several ways. Let's start with some, the recent glitches. And there were three meetings that didn't get posted in a timely manner. One of those three, the problem actually was with townhouse issues and not Area 58. There were two other meetings that ended up posted timely on YouTube, but didn't get on Area 58. Incredibly frustrating. John, I know it frustrates you. I'm a little quieter about it, but it frustrates me even more. I have spent time with Rich Glouart, the Executive Director of Area 58. And there's a new sort of procedure in place where we have a, one of the production assistants is going to take on this. And there is the expectation that these meetings should get posted within 48 hours, which of course is exactly what we want. And look, it's not perfect. It's a challenge. COVID has been a significant challenge to Area 58. But on that particular issue, timely posting of meetings, I think we have a new procedure in place that, that hopefully is going to help on that. So that's point one. The bigger issue, the goal of meetings broadcast live and live access as well as Zoom access all at the same time has also been explored. And as I understand it, is ready to go. All the technology is there with the exception that we needed, we need a dedicated IP address, which Liz is working on. And Rich assures me that when we get back to meeting, live meetings, that we have the capability and ready to go on that. So there's no disagreement on that. You are right, the tri-town municipal agreement ends in, I think, June. And so we'll need a new one of those along the way. I will say that in general, as I understand it, in the three towns, pretty much all the selectmen are satisfied in general with what's going on and very much in favor of Area 58 continuing. Again, I fully recognize things aren't, aren't perfect. And I, we keep, need to keep looking at this and prodding this. There is no way in the world, I think, that we could go it alone. And I, you know, I've been an advocate of shared services in various means among the various towns. We tried it with fire and of course that didn't work out. But I still stand by, this is an example of shared services that actually has worked, not as well as we'd like, but has worked. And I think we have to continue every effort to improve, forever improve, but a decent product that we just want to keep improving and move forward on.
Well, you know, if, if we were to look at something like PAC, it would still be a shit service. I mean, they share over four towns, so it would just be a fifth town. I don't even know. I'm a little surprised that Rich says that we can go forward because I understand that there was some equipment cost that you needed. And so I wasn't advocating that we absolutely moved to another position, because I don't even know what the cost of the equipment was going to be. But if, if he makes a commitment and I, I would be all for it. And I guess I would ask if we can do the, if we can do Zoom, and he says we can move to broadcast, is there a chance we could broadcast these meetings live, even though we're on Zoom?
Yeah.
In other words, we're not in a room.
My understanding is all of those components are ready to go, except with two exceptions. We need a dedicated IP address and of course, we're not meeting live. And God only knows when that's going to come again. Look, the other piece is Rich is more than glad to come in at any time. He's gone into the other two towns. He's glad to come in and talk about the technical aspects of this. And if that's desired, please just ask for it and we'll get them in. And I'm glad to keep having these discussions and, and keep moving forward.
I think I would like to hear from him. And if we don't necessarily have to do it in the selectmen's meeting, but if, that would be good too. I'm a little surprised that the other towns, I know in talking to Charlie Seelig before he left for East Bridgewater, he was not a fan. And so I'm a little surprised. Halifax, you know, it's kind of a change there because the only selectman who has had any tenure is Troy Garen. And the other two are brand new. So I'm not sure where they're at.
Look, I'm getting this third hand, but my, my third hand is that at least 10 out of the 11 in segment, selectmen involved are, are happy with the Area 58 efforts along the way. I mean, recognizing the the bothersome occasional screw ups.
Well, why don't we ask Rich to do this? Give us a date that we can put our hands around and say, okay, let's give this a shot and see if it works. So that we've got something firm to say, okay. If it's next June, I don't know when it would be, but you know, that we want to see if we can actually do this and broadcast it. Because we did try it before and it didn't work. And I, that may have just been a human error screw up.
Look, I, my understanding is it's, it's ready to go. And really the delay is the COVID stuff that gets in the way. You know, if it'd be good to have Rich come in and say it live for all of us, I think that'd be fine too. So maybe we can set that up, Liz, for sometime in January and, and then we've had the discussion.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
That sounds good to me. Great. Very good. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, so now on to the liquor license renewals for 2022. All right, let me pull these up here. All right. So John, you inspected the, the club, both of their licenses, the, the club license to consume alcohol on premises and also their, their range permit. So everything looked good?
I want to tell you, I was very diligent, so much that I went back a couple of times to make sure.
I'm sure you didn't have a glass of wine or a beer, but.
I also took the police chief on a tour around town and took him down to see the, the range, as well as in the club, out of the club, you know. So yes, everything was fine and they're doing a great job. And I think it's good.
Okay. All right. So I'll make a motion that we approve the, the clubs, the Upland Club's club license for the sale of all kinds of alcoholic beverages to be consumed on premises. And their hours are that the alcohol can be sold are 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, I'm sorry, 8:00 AM, yeah, to 2:00 AM, secular days and Saturdays and Sundays from 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM the following Monday. So do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Roll call vote. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. So now on to the range permit. And you found that to be good too? Everything satisfactory?
Yes. Obviously, it's, yeah.
It is. It's a top-notch operation that they've got there. I agree. I've shot there as well. Okay, so I apologize. It's sideways on my screen. So we're going to make, or I'll make a motion that we grant the target and trap shooting range permit to the, the Upland Sportsman's Club. And that is no shooting before 10:00 AM except, AM, except Sundays and holidays when the starting time is 11:00 AM. And no shooting after sunset, fully automatic weapons are excluded from this permit.
I'll make, I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. All right. So we've done the club. All right. So Mark, you went to see a follow-up visit to the Upland, or I'm sorry, Plimpton Gas and Convenience. How did you find everything?
Everything was fine. The license has been posted. I bought a Diet Coke.
Perfect. All right. So I'll make a motion that we grant a retail package license for the sale of wine and malt beverages not to be consumed on the premises to Arti Corporation, doing business as Plimpton Gas and Convenience. And they're located at 280 Main Street. Their conditions are that alcohol can be sold from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, or 8:00 AM to 11:30 PM on any day preceding a legal holiday, except when prohibited by MGL Chapter 138, Section 33. The Sunday hours are 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM unless prohibited by that same MGL. So do we have a second?
Russo, second.
Okay, second. Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. All right. So now on to Plimpton Convenience and Liquor Store. I did the inspection there. I found everything to be in good order and his license was posted right behind the counter. And I did not buy anything, but I had a nice conversation with Mr. Kang. So I'll make a motion that we grant a retail package goods store for the sale and sell of all kinds of alcoholic beverages not to be consumed on the premises to C.A. Kang LLC, doing business as Plimpton Convenience and Liquor Store at 286 Main Street in Plimpton. And his hours of operation, or the hours that alcohol can be sold are 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, or 8:00 AM to 11:30 PM on any day preceding a legal holiday, except when prohibited by MGL Chapter 138, Section 33. Sunday hours to be 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM unless prohibited by the same MGL. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call vote. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. And then finally, we have got Cacades. I did the inspection there as well. I, the license was posted and I found everything to be in good order. So I'll make a motion that we grant a license to sell wine and malt beverages to be consumed on the premises to Cacades Burgers Express, Plimpton, Inc., Cade's Express, Plimpton, 286 Main Street. And their hours when alcohol can be sold are 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM, or 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM on any day preceding a legal holiday, except when prohibited by MGL Chapter 138, Section 33. The Sunday hours are 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM unless prohibited by that same MGL. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, second. John, roll call vote. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. So that is it for the, all of the liquor licenses. So Bree, you need us to come in and sign these ASAP, right?
Yes, I do.
Okay. All right.
It will be on the calendar. As I have two people by tomorrow, I can get it in tomorrow's mail.
Beautiful. Okay.
I'll be in.
All right. Okay, I won't be, but.
I will.
Okay, awesome. Okay. All right. So we're all set with the liquor licenses. All right. So the next license is the Common Bitlers renewal. And I believe we just have one Common Bitlers.
We have two.
Oh, we've got two Common Bitlers. Fantastic. Okay.
I have one for Cacades and Just Right Farm.
Okay. All right. I'm just scrolling down here through all the licenses. Okay. Boy, we've got a lot of Class twos. Okay, let's see.
Hey, what has just been on a list that I sent you that just said 2022 Common Bitlers?
Oh, we don't actually have a copy. Okay.
All right. Really no thing.
Okay.
I never had one of any of their files.
Okay. So there's really no, no conditions on their Common Bitlers? It's just a Common Bitlers license. Is that correct?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. All right. So I'll make a motion that we grant a Common Bitlers license, the renewals for 2022, to Just Right Farm and. to, um, Just Right Farm and, um, Cacades.
I'll second.
All right, uh, roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Joy, yes. Um, Mr. Russo?
I'm going to recuse myself on Just Right Farm. I'm a yes on Cacades.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, so, um, next item is the Class Two and Class Three and Scrap Metal License Renewals for 2022. John, you, um, went out, uh, and did the inspections. Did you find, um, everything to be satisfactory?
Yes, I went, uh, a couple of times to Angels Auto and Towing. Um, there, uh, it very hard to judge them because they're always got so many cars. It depends on what time of the day you go, but it, during the 24 hours, they were always within the limit of the 15 cars. So I felt comfortable with that. So I don't see, uh, a problem in terms of approving that there. And I looked at the other ones, the motorcycle ones, obviously there was nothing going on. There were no cars there, were no motorcycles there, was nobody there. So, uh, they were all fine. And, um, on, uh, Competition Autobody, since they have done that over, the, they do, the cars that had no plates on them were all the ones that seemed to be in for auto body repair. So they were not selling them even though they, uh, at least there was no indication they were selling them. So I didn't feel uncomfortable saying that they're, they're, they should be approved.
Okay. All right. Thank you, John, for, um, for doing all that legwork. All right. So, um, why don't we just go through these, um, one by one? I'll, um, read the license and, um, their conditions into the record and then, um, do you want to vote these individually?
Can we do them together?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wish, uh, let's do them together.
Okay, since every, since we found everything to be in, um, good order, that does make perfect sense to do in, um, in one vote. All right. So, um, I'll make a motion that we approve the Class Two and, um, Class Three and Scrap Metal License Renewals for 2022 for the following, um, businesses. So first will be the Class Two for Henry Larson, doing business as LB Salvage, and that's at 87 County Road. And his conditions are no cars for display. All conditions imposed on tenants' Class Two licenses are deemed incorporated as conditions on license holders' Class Two license. License holder shall enforce violations against his tenant's Class Two license conditions. The provisions of the Town of Plimpton bylaws are incorporated as conditions by reference. License holder shall mark the property boundary for the purpose of the six-foot setback. Conditions subject to change with 30-day notice from the Selectman must comply with all pertinent Massachusetts general laws. Next is, um, Henry Larson, doing business as LB Salvage Incorporated. This is his junk license, his Class Three. 87 County Road with the following conditions. No loads of incoming or outgoing vehicles to be left in front of the premises for more than 24 hours. All vehicles not to be sold as retail and/or repairable, and all equipment and/or wrecker and flatbed are to be kept behind, behind the fence. No vehicles may be stacked within 100 yards of the front fence. No stacked vehicles may be visible over fence. No vehicles closer than six feet of boundary lines on all sides. No heavy equipment or loud vehicles or equipment can be operated before 8:00 AM or after 6:30 PM. Conditions subject to change with 30-day notice from Selectman must comply with all pertinent, uh, Massachusetts general laws and town bylaws. All right, next is, um, the Scrap Dealer License for Henry Larson, doing business as LB Salvage at 87, um, County Road, and this is for metals and secondhand articles. Um, and this is, uh, that's, there's no additional conditions on this one. So it's just the, that he's, um, operating a shop for the purpose of sale or barter in junk, old metals and secondhand articles. All right. So next is, um, Angels Auto and Towing for a Class Two license, also located at 87 County Road. The conditions are as follows, 15 cars for display in front of fence. All conditions imposed on tenants' Class Two are deemed incorporated as condition on license holders' Class Two license. License holder shall enforce violation against his tenant's Class Two license conditions. The provisions of the Town of Plimpton bylaws are incorporated as conditions by reference. License holder shall mark the boundary, the property boundary for the purpose of a six-foot setback. Conditions subject to change with 30-day notice from the Selectman must comply with all pertinent Massachusetts general laws. No Sunday or holiday hours, and the premises must be kept clean and orderly. Next is, um, let's see here, uh, Roger Randolph, doing business as Competition Autobody, 337 Main Street in Plimpton, actually 337 and 341 Main Street in Plimpton, and his five conditions are as follows. No vehicles to be parked to obstruct the view of traffic entering or exiting the premises. No more than 25 vehicles for sale. No cars to be displayed on Pleasant Street. Premises must be kept neat and orderly and confined to southerly front section and entire rear part of the garage with office on southerly side. Conditions subject to change with 30-day notice from Selectman must comply with all pertinent Massachusetts general laws and town bylaws. Next is, um, Motorsports, and that's for a Class Two located at 72 County Road. His conditions are a maximum of 15 vehicles on display at one time. No vehicles to be parked to obstruct the view of traffic entering or exiting the premises. Premises to be kept clean and orderly. Conditions subject to change with 30-day notice from the Selectman must comply with all pertinent Massachusetts general laws and bylaws. All right, um, uh, class, okay, that's just the Class Two for, uh, Motorsports. Okay, then we've got, um, a Class Two for, uh, Plimpton Cycles, Brandon Berry, doing business as Plimpton Cycles, also, um, located at 87 County Road. His conditions are as follows. Maximum of 10 motorcycles on display at one time. Motorcycles to be aligned in front of and behind Gas Pump Island. No motorcycles to be parked to obstruct the view of traffic entering or exiting the premises. Driveways to remain clear. Premises to be kept clean and orderly. Conditions subject to change with 30-day notice from Selectman must comply with all pertinent Massachusetts general laws and town bylaws. And, um, the, uh, uh, another Class Two is Bridge Bike Incorporated, and that's at 97 County Road in Plimpton. And, um, their six conditions are as follows. This license pertains to the sale of motorcycles only. Repairs as well as the sale of any other types of motor vehicles are excluded. There shall be no outside display of motorcycles for sale. Sales shall be internet-based only. There shall be no more than 10 motorcycles for sale at any given time. Exterior premises must be kept neat and orderly. Conditions subject to change with 30-day notice from the Board of Selectman. Licensee must comply with all pertinent, uh, Massachusetts general laws and town bylaws. And that is it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, this is second to approve all of the, um, licenses with, um, the conditions, um, as read, which are all from, um, the previous, um, 2021, uh, licenses. So we've got a, a motion and a second. Uh, roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. All right. So now that one's done. All right, um, Liz or Bree, are you reporting on warrants paid?
Hold on, yes, I have it. Um, total warrants, uh, on $2,844.66. In there with the win, um, the rabbit removal, picnic bowls, the basic, everything. Rise and water, local computer. And that's it? Are you there?
Uh, Christine?
Can you hear me? Sorry, Bree. Thank you very much. I appreciate, um, that, uh, that information. Okay, so, um, next item is appointments and, um, Kathy's hung in with us, um, probably to, uh, for her appointment. So, um, I'll make a motion that, um, we make the following appointments and, um, can we just do these as a group? I'll make the motion.
You can do them all. You can do them all together.
Perfect. Okay. So Tom Millias, Co-Zoning Enforcement Officer through 630, 2022. Kathleen Canizo, Co-, uh, Zoning Enforcement Officer through 630, 2022. John Canizo Jr., Special Police Officer through 630, 2022. Geraldine Salini, Counsel on Aging through 630, 2022. Elena Mullins, Cultural Counsel, uh, through 12, 20, 2024, and Patricia Gillespie, Cultural Counsel through 12, 20, 2024. So I made a motion to make the following appointments. Do we have a second? Okay, second. Okay, second. Um, Mr. Russo, do we, uh, roll call vote, uh, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. Kathy, did you have something that you wanted to say?
Uh, no, I was just listening in, just in case you had any questions.
No.
I should know, um, Kathy and Tom's appointments will be effective January 1st. And all the, effective today.
Okay. Great.
And can, can I just say, thank you, thank you Kathy, um, uh, thrilled to have you join the team in this new role.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. I'm looking forward to it.
Um, would this be from 1, 1, um, 22 to 6:30?
Tom and Kathy are effective January 1st. All the others are effective today.
Okay. But they'll run until June 30th?
Yeah, they're all on the agenda. It has the term expiration.
I had the old agenda. I didn't print the.
Oh, okay. I can forward you the new one.
Yeah, I, I got it. I printed it and left it when I left for the dentist. Thank you.
All right. Thank you Kathy very much. We, this is, um, we look forward to working with you in this new capacity. So thank you for, uh, for serving with Tom. He's, um, gonna be, uh, but you've worked with him before. He's in a great source of information and so knowledgeable about, um, zoning and building and all of that. So, welcome. All right. So now on to the Town Administrators Updates. I'll turn it over to you, Liz.
Um, so for COVID, um, we're still holding steady at over 12%. Um, so that's not the best news. I sent out the Board of Health guidance that they voted last week. Um, otherwise, um, moving on to the Old Town House, um, we need to have that remediation work done. Um, it's emergency work to deal with the, um, potential mold situation in that building. Um, the estimate from Serve Pro for this emergency work was $7,808. Um, so I was just looking for authorization to proceed with that. Um, I spoke with the Board of Health about this briefly. They think it's great to proceed. Um, they've seen the estimate as well. Um, the only thing that they're requesting, they would like to be made aware when the work is complete so that the health agent can just go back through the building and take another look at things before they clear it to reopen. So I thought that was reasonable. But if it's okay with the board, I'd like to get back to Serve Pro and, um, get on their schedule.
I'm fine with it and I, uh, believe, uh, I've talked to John Wilhamsen as part of the Town Properties Committee and I believe he was fine with it too.
And I'm fine with it. I'm just wondering where the funds are going to come from, if we know yet.
I think we'll have to fund it out of town building maintenance for now, um, and then see if we need to move something around, potentially a special town meeting. Uh, because there's a lot of different projects kind of framing down on those funds. Um, but this one unfortunately, I don't think there's any real way around it.
Agreed.
I'm gonna have to drop out one minute.
All right, um, I'll make a motion that we authorize Liz to enter into agreement with Serve Pro for the, um, remediation at the Old Town House.
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes, and, uh, Mr. Trainer has, um, left the room. All right, um, anything else, Liz?
Um, we're also going to see if it, um, affects the price at all with Serve Pro. There might be a savings, um, depending on what we do with the trim that they have to take off in that room. Um, John Wilhamsen wanted us to look into potentially having them clean it, but save it, um, rather than having to reconstruct all of it. So, um, more to come on that. Um, the budget memo went out. Budgets are back, um, back by January 11th. Um, so budget season is in full swing. Um, we also wanted to acknowledge Sunrise Gardens. Um, they graciously donated all of the wreaths, um, for the Santa Run and the festivities this past weekend. That was it for my update. I do have, um, in correspondence, um, acknowledging Ken Thompson's resignation letter from the zoning enforcement officer position. Um, he's gonna continue in the role, um, through and until December 31st. Um, and then he will be, um, all done in that capacity and he did, um, forward a resignation note to the Town Clerk's Office. Um, so that's taken care of. Um, also too, I just wanted to make note, um, for the opioid settlement paperwork that, um, counsel had walked all the towns through how you, um, respond to that. Um, we did have Christine come in and sign. Um, it only needed one signature, just as the chair, and Bree is gonna mail the necessary paperwork to the AG's office, um, upon the guidance issued by counsel. So that's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Liz. I'm sorry to hear about Ken. Wish him, um, all the best going forward. Is he gonna be, does he serve on any other committees in the town or was that it? Just zoning enforcement?
That was it, um, for now.
All right. Thank you. All right, um, so that we've, on to the minutes of 12:06. John and, uh, Mark, did you guys get a chance to read them?
I did. I was fine with them.
I am also fine with them. Well done.
Yeah, well done, Bree. I didn't, um, I, I was, uh, fine with them too. So I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of 12:06 as written. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, second. Uh, roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, um, so last, uh, little bit of, um, uh, notification before we, um, wrap things up tonight. Our next meeting will be, uh, January 10th and then, um, the following meeting will be January 24th. And those are both, uh, scheduled for 5:45 at this time. So, um, on to rants and raves. The raves, I'm sorry.
Rants and raves.
All right. Would you like to go first, John?
Sure. Um, I guess like all of us, we're just, it's unbelievable when we think about Kathy Drynan. I didn't work with her closely. I really didn't know her that well, but my wife worked with her when she was at the school and talked so highly of her as had, as have so many others come forth, uh. She was certainly a forced and obviously well-loved. Yeah, so I've seen all the, uh, write-ups, so. I don't know if it's a rave or what it is. I'm just, still, it just seems absurd, but I guess we move on. Um, I do have a couple of, uh, people who came forward and said they would like me to give a rave. Uh, one was Jim Mustakaros, um, and his rave was for Michelle Lambs, um, who lives in Plimpton. And his rave was for Michelle Lambs, who lives in Plimpton. She was at that time on the Council on Aging. And a person, she found a person who was in need of an electric wheelchair. And she worked to find that person, electric wheelchair, the person was a resident in town. And with Jim's help, they got that chair delivered to the lady, who was obviously very happy to have it because the person it was for was in such bad shape. That person has since passed away, my understanding. And the chair is now being offered back to us, so I've asked Steve Silva, he said he would look into how, where we could store it. So that's one rave. The other rave, Colleen Thompson said that she got a request from a citizen in town who because of the, the power outage we had, lost a lot of food, et cetera, a lot of trash, was not able to take care of it herself, and was asking if the town could have a town truck go down and pick it up for her. And Rob Furlott said, unfortunately, no, but then Rob and Ben Sorrow went down with their own trucks and picked it up and took all the trash, et cetera, to the transfer station. So a shout out for both those, all those people, because it was, it was kind of makes you know what Plimpton's all about. And lastly, a thank you to Ken Thompson. The zoning agent job is not always an easy one, as we know. We've seen agents come and go, but I think Ken tried, and he's got some issues he's dealing with, and hopefully we can get Tyson back into a role somewhere in town. That's my rave.
Thanks, Sean, Mark, do you have a rave?
Sure, so I'll just second John's, Kathy Dreinen was unbelievably special. She once wrote a short story about the barn at Just Right Farm that's falling down, and it just shows the breadth of her talents and her skills. And I agree with John completely about Ken Thompson. There's such a wealth of knowledge and expertise and talent there, and I hope we can tap into it again in the future. My main rave is kind of the opportunity of the holiday season, obviously a time to count blessings and a time of sharing, but also a time to kind of slow down, rest a little bit, and using that opportunity to reconnect and even to soften a little. So my rave is that opportunity and that hope for all of us that we all can do just that, slow down a bit, reconnect, soften.
Good advice. Mine, I'm gonna follow right in line with both of you. I met Kathy Dreinen, I volunteered with the Dosen Art Program at the Denit, and that's the only time that I worked with Kathy, but I just found her to be really just a kind soul and so dedicated to the town and really her, any pursuit that she was interested, she really went in all in and gave it her all. So she will be, she will be missed by all. And, and Ken too. Zoning is a thankless job, and quite often it's a can of worms that he's, you know, you're getting into, and it's not an easy position. So thank you for your service, Ken, and hopefully in the future, you know, you're able to come back in that capacity and if you'd like, no pressure. And then my wish would just be, you know, for people to have some peace and joy this holiday season, and it's, this is a time when I always kind of reflect and how lucky I am and so fortunate to be surrounded with so many good people. And, and you folks all are a big part of that. So thank you all for, for everything you do. And then Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah, however you celebrate the holiday, I wish you all the best, and we'll see you next year. All right, so that's it tonight.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
All right, happy holidays. So on that note, we'll adjourn. So good night, everyone, have a wonderful holiday. Good night.
Good travels.
Good night, have a good holiday, everybody.
Thank you, you too, Bree.